Director General of WHO, Dr. Tedros, you may please have the floor.
Thank you, thank you so much. Your Excellency Harsh Vardhan, Mister of Health and Family Welfare of India, Namaste. Excellencies, dear colleagues and friends, good morning, good afternoon and good evening. I'm delighted to be able to welcome representatives from member states here in the room and online. It seems incredible to think that when this board met in February, there were just 151 cases and wonders outside China of what we now call COVID-19. Today, almost 35 million cases of COVID have now been reported to WHO and more than 1 million people are reported to have lost their lives. The real number is certainly higher. Numbers can blind us to the reality that every single life lost is someone who loved and was loved by others, someone's mother, father, someone's sister, someone's brother, daughter or son. They're the reason we're here. And I would like to invite you to join me in standing for a moment of silence to honor those we have lost. Thank you, thank you so much. Although all countries have been affected by this virus, we must remember that this is an uneven pandemic. Ten countries account for 70% of all reported cases and deaths and just three countries account for half. Dr. Mike Ryan will give a more detailed epidemiological analysis. Not all countries have responded the same way and not all countries have been affected the same way. There are roughly four different situations that countries are facing. First, some countries act decisively and quickly and have avoided large outbreaks. Second, some countries have had large outbreaks but were able to bring them under control and continue to suppress the virus. Third, while some countries brought the virus under control as economies and societies have eased restrictions, there has been an increase in cases. And fourth, there are still some countries that are in the intense phase of transmission. What we have learned in every region of the world is that with strong leadership, clear and comprehensive strategies, consistent communication, an engaged, empowered and enabled population, it's never too late. Again, it's never too late to change any kind of tide. Every situation can be turned around and hard-won gains can be easily lost. The pandemic underlines the fundamental importance of investing in public health and primary healthcare even as we fight the virus. Since the beginning of the pandemic, WHO has worked around the clock to support countries to prepare and respond to this new virus. On the 30th of January, I declared the public health emergency of international concern, the highest level of alarm under international law. Just four days later, WHO published our first strategic preparedness and response plan. But even before that, one of our highest priorities was to rapidly identify this new virus and enable countries to test for it. So I'll take a few minutes to tell you about the progress of the SPRP or the plan. Within two weeks of the first cases being reported to WHO, we developed and published the first protocol for developing a PCR test. We worked with experts in Berlin, London, Hong Kong, Rotterdam and others to develop the first diagnostic test. Because the first thing which is very important was to find where the enemy is and that's why we focused on having the right test kit. On the 2nd of February, less than a month into the outbreak, the first tests were produced and we began shipping them around the world. At the same time, we worked to expand PCR testing capacity around the world, leveraging national influenza centers and building capacity where it was lacking. We expanded PCR testing capacity for COVID-19 in Africa especially, from just two countries in January to 32 by the end of February and all countries by mid-June. As you remember, it was only South Africa and Senegal who were able to do the test. Since then, we have distributed millions of tests to more than 150 countries. No laboratory test in history has been developed and deployed with that speed. We didn't isolate the virus or WHO didn't isolate the virus. We didn't sequence or publish the genome. We didn't manufacture the assays and we don't make PCR machines. But it was WHO that connected the dots to give countries the capacity to find and respond to this new virus. We have taken the same approach to developing guidance. Ten months ago, this virus was completely unknown to the world. We have now published more than 400 guidance documents for individuals, communities, schools, businesses, industries, health workers, health facilities and governments. But we haven't just published the guidance. Through the openwho.org online learning platform, we have built country capacity by providing free training in 133 COVID-19 courses from infection prevention and control to clinical management, operational planning, data collection and much more. And importantly, we have gone far beyond the six official UN languages, delivering courses in 41 languages, demonstrating our commitment to multilingualism. The COVID-19 response actually have speeded up our plan for multilingualism and we will continue to expand that to even more than 41 languages which we are doing now. Our country teams have worked closely with governments to write national plans and identify needs and to match those needs with more than 600 partners and 74 donors through the groundbreaking COVID-19 Partners Platform. WHO and our partners sent experts' missions to more than 130 countries to provide operational and technical support. We have sourced, validated, purchased and delivered masks, gloves, respirators, gowns, goggles, swabs, tests, reagents, thermometers, oxygen concentrators, ventilators and more to 177 countries and territories around the world. And more than 12,000 patients have now been enrolled in the WHO Solidarity Therapeutics Trial in nearly 500 hospitals in 29 countries. But even as we have developed and deployed these tools, we started discussions with many partners about how to accelerate research and development while ensuring fair distribution of diagnostics, therapeutics and vaccines. In April, the Access to COVID-19 Tools Accelerator was born, an unprecedented global partnership that's delivering tangible results based on the two objectives I said, accelerating development of products and fair distribution. Together with our partners, last week we reached an agreement to make 120 million new rapid tests available to low and middle income countries. As soon as the data were published showing dexamethasone was effective in treating patients with severe and critical disease, we secured critical supplies for up to 4.5 million patients to ensure patients in lower income countries don't miss out on this lifesaving medicine. COVAX is supporting the development of nine vaccines with more in the pipeline. 168 countries and economies are covered by the COVAX facility, representing more than 2/3 of the world's population and we are still in discussion with another 25 countries. All of this has only been possible because of the power of partnership. WHO doesn't have the mandate or the capacity to do everything. But we do have the unique mandate and capacity to coordinate the global response by harnessing the collective strengths of our many partners across the UN system and beyond. And it has only been possible because of you, because of you, our member states. This is your WHO. The guidance we provide is not just written by WHO staff. It's developed in close consultation with experts from your national institutions, drawing on professional networks developed over decades. The PPE and tests we deliver are paid off for with the funds you provide and thank you so much for the funding so far, based on the SPRP we presented to you. Everything we have accomplished together in the past nine months has only been possible because of the deep-rooted transformation that we have designed and implemented together over the past three years. Throughout the response, we have seen how WHO's transformation is helping to make us more agile and responsive and to deliver the support the world needs. Thank you for endorsing our transformation design last year, March 2019. Even part of its implementation is helping us to move in the right direction. Our new operating model with which aligns our organizational structures vertically at all three levels, region and countries, is helping us to deliver impact in countries. Working with the Emergencies Programme and building on the Research and Development Blueprint, our newly formed Science Division has brought together researchers from around the world to identify priorities, initiated the solidarity trial and quality assured our scientific publications and guidance. Now the Science Division is ready to launch a solidarity trial for vaccines. Our new division of Emergency Preparedness has developed the COVID-19 Partners Platform, supported intra-action reviews and is working closely with the Universal Health Coverage Divisions to improve and maintain public health functions and essential health services. Working with the Emergencies Programme, the Division of Data and Delivery for Impact and the Digital Health Department have developed tools under ICD-10 for monitoring COVID-19-associated mortality. The openwho.org learning platform has provided powerful proof of concept for the WHO Academy, the new WHO Academy, and training millions in many countries. And the Global Preparedness Monitoring Board has developed its second report, as you know, providing an independent assessment of key gaps in global pandemic and preparedness last year and this year. Our transformation started with Sertin's general programme of work, which you endorsed two years ago. With a new mission statement and ambitious triple billion targets, the pandemic has demonstrated the intimate links between each of the triple billion targets. Health and well-being, universal health coverage and emergency preparedness and response are three strands of a rope that together provide strong support for social, economic and political stability. Our first priority must be to keep people healthy and out of hospitals by addressing the root causes of diseases in the air people breathe, the food they eat, the water they drink and the environment in which they live and work. When people do need health services, those services must be accessible, affordable and high-quality. And just as many countries invest heavily in their military capacity in case of conflict, so they must invest in robust public health capacities to prepare for, prevent, detect and respond rapidly to outbreaks when they occur. The three pillars of the GPW you endorsed last year actually bring this kind of interconnection, a very seamless process between the three. The pandemic is a powerful demonstration of why the triple billion targets we have committed together are so important and why we must pursue them with even more determination. We are not on the wrong path, we are on the right path, but we need to go faster, we need to go farther and we need to build on the transformation, we need to go together. Excellencies, the pandemic is a wake-up call for all of us. We must all look in the mirror and ask what we can do better and learn honestly. Following your guidance, I have initiated several reviews through the Independent Panel for Pandemic Preparedness and Response, the International Health Regulation Review Committee and the Independent Oversight and Advisory Committee for the WHO Health Emergencies Programme. I look forward to their findings and recommendations and to building on our transformation to strengthen global preparedness and response. All three committees will brief you on their progress tomorrow. As you know, I have also launched an urgent investigation into reports of alleged sexual exploitation and abuse by people who identified themselves as working for WHO in the Democratic Republic of the Congo. We have identified a list of outstanding potential candidates to lead this investigation and I will have more news soon. I wish to be very clear, we hold ourselves to the highest standards and the behaviour described in this report is appalling and unacceptable. We are totally committed to accountability, both for the results we deliver and for our conduct and we are committed to continuous learning, continuous listening and continuous improvement. But even as these reviews continue, there are already many things we can do together to improve. For us, change is a constant, I repeat, change is a constant and that's what we have been doing the last three, four years and we need to continue. We can never sit still, science and disease patterns are constantly evolving and so must WHO. Many member states have already come forward with suggestions about how to strengthen the global system for emergency preparedness and response. The pandemic has demonstrated that highly infectious pathogens cannot be contained by any single sovereign state. We can only confront them by working together in solidarity and with a one-health approach that addresses the links between human, animal and planetary health. The world needs a system of robust peer review and mutual accountability for rapid and effective surveillance, preparedness and response. This is something we have already started working on, learning from the system of universal periodic review used by Human Rights Council. And I would like to thank the Africa Group in general, but Central African Republic and Benin for bringing forward these suggestions. In the spirit of change as a constant, we encourage all countries to come up with new ideas like France and Germany did and others. We have to be open to changes and we have to implement change now. Excellencies, colleagues and friends. With the northern hemisphere influenza season approaching and cases increasing in many countries, there are three key priorities for the next three months. First, we must realize the full potential of the ACT Accelerator. Currently, the financing gap for the ACT Accelerator stands at $34 billion US dollars with $14 billion US dollars needed now to maintain momentum. History will not judge us kindly if it records that trillions of dollars were poured into domestic stimulus packages but the international community could not find the funds to ensure equitable access for all people. This is not charity, it's the fastest way to end the pandemic and catalyze the global economic recovery. Second, we must all continue to make the most of the tools we have, hand hygiene, physical distancing, respiratory etiquette, masks, ventilation, surveillance, isolation, compassionate care, contact tracing and quarantine. We know all this works and that's why WHO says do it all. And third, I will never be tired of calling for solidarity. Finger pointing will not prevent a single infection. Apportioning blame will not save a single life. What saves life is national unity and global solidarity. Last week, I had the great honour of speaking to Captain Sir Tom Moore as he approached his 100th birthday earlier this year. Captain Tom decided to raise £1,000 for the UK's National Health Service by completing 100 laps of his garden. He ended up raising £40 million. For me, Captain Tom represents the selflessness and solidarity the world needs to overcome this pandemic. Everyone must play their part, from the individual decisions we make to protect ourselves and others, to the discussions we will have this week on behalf of the people we serve. We are all in this together. I hope you know and we all know that fighting each other wastes more energy. We can actually finish this virus with less energy. Let's use all the energy we have to use, let's use all the energy we have to fight the virus, not each other. But I am encouraged that we share a common vision for a stronger WHO and a healthier, safer, fairer world. Seventy-five years after the birth of the United Nations, the need for national unity and global solidarity has never been more apparent. The only way forward is together. Sorry you must be tired of me saying this again and again because that's key, that's what we are lacking. We have all been humbled and inspired by the health workers all over the world who have put themselves in harm's way in the service of others. Let's do the national unity and global solidarity in respect of those heroes, heroines in the frontline. And please join me in showing our appreciation and solidarity for these health heroes. To all health workers in the world, please accept our respect and appreciation. Thank you so much and my appreciation and respect to all our member states. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Tedros. Now I would like to give the floor to the Secretaryate to provide a technical update on the COVID-19 response. Secretaryate, you can have the floor, please.
Thank you, Minister. Your Excellencies and colleagues, this presentation will give you a brief update on the current epidemiologic situation, will summarize WHO's response, in particular as relevant to the implementation of Resolution WHOA 73.1 which you have in your documents and identify some challenges and opportunities in the current month. The said document, WHOA 73.1, focused in its request to WHO on coordination across the UN, strengthening WHO's capacity assisting member states with both the response, continuity of healthcare, assisting national strategic planning, normative guidance, tools, data and evidence, working with FAO and YU and partners to identify the zoonotic source, informing the MS on financing and global access to equipment and supplies. Next slide, please. The latest epidemiologic curve shows that the pandemic continues to evolve and with the continued surge in Southeast Asia and is once more on an upward trajectory in the northern hemisphere. Next slide. Okay, the Director General has already referred to the different transmission scenarios. This pandemic is neither dynamically behaving nor impacting in the same way in every member state and every region. The impact in terms of cases per million because of that varies around the world. So when we look at raw numbers, it's difficult to really look at the impact per head of population. This map shows you the diversity of that impact around the world and equally so in terms of deaths. Last week, we reached the grim and tragic milestone of 1 million deaths reported from COVID-19. Every one of those lives lost is a tragedy, as DG has said. Many deaths though have been averted and many more lives can be protected through our collective strength, resolve, unity and solidarity, as repeatedly called for by the Director General. The global numbers belies significant differences, as I said, in regional epidemiology. Southeast Asia continues to see a surge in cases with Europe and the eastern Mediterranean regions showing an increase in cases and deaths. The situation in Africa and the Western Pacific is currently rather more positive. Our current best estimates tell us that about 10% of the global population may have been infected by this virus. This varies depending on country, it varies from urban to rural, it varies between different groups. But what it does mean is that the vast majority of the world remains at risk. We know the pandemic will continue to evolve, but we also know we have the tools that work to suppress transmission and save lives right now and they are at our disposal. The future depends on the choices we collectively make about how we use those tools, develop, scale up and distribute others. WHO set out three very simple goals at the beginning of this pandemic, to reduce transmission of the virus, to protect vulnerable and to save lives. All our collective efforts over the past nine months and the knowledge we have gained with you about this virus means that we collectively are in a far stronger position now to achieve them than perhaps seemed possible even only a few months ago. The strategic plan focused on mobilization of all sectors, controlling spread of cases, suppressing community transmission, reducing mortality and developing safe and effective vaccines, therapeutics and diagnostics. WHO Strategic Preparedness and Response Plan, as I said, was published on February 4th, DG has mentioned that, four days after the declaration of the global public health emergency on the 30th of January. It was born of a doctrine, of that doctrine of putting countries and health at the heart of the response and its influence can also be seen both in the Global Humanitarian Response Plan and the UN Socioeconomic Framework for COVID-19, both which have strong pillars on health. on health systems and health access. Since the first days of this response, I think I can say that we have witnessed that the reforms and transformation of WHO initiated by Dr Tedros since his first days in office have changed the way the organisation does business and have started to pay dividends. Putting countries and communities, plus delivery and impact at the heart of everything we do, was also well underway before COVID-19. But those changes in organisation and culture have been hardwired by this crisis. The creation of the Division of Emergency Preparedness within the Emergencies Programme, the joint stewardship of the R&amp;D blueprint as an agile cross-programme initiative, the creation of the Science Division, bringing new services to ensure the highest quality in our scientific work, the strengthening of the emergency functions and business operations, information technology and donor engagement, have all been tested in recent emergencies. COVID-19 has signalled strongly that WHO has fundamentally changed the way it operates as an organisation, as part of the broader UN system. With respect to the current response, WHO's emergency framework was fully implemented with a full incident management team triggered on the first of January. WHO's regional platforms and country presence has been fully mobilised. WHO's Health Security Council, led by DG, and engaging senior management at HQ with the six regional directors and their teams. Internal surge capacity has been utilised, with staff available to work with WHO within the incident management support team been doubled, with now over three hundred and sixty technical staff directly supporting the response, with hundreds of others continuing to provide support, services to the response, continued delivery on essential services and delivery of WHO's broader mandate. In addition, across the organisation, we have engaged nearly two thousand consultants, of which fifteen hundred have been deployed at country level and five hundred between headquarters and the regions. The Strategic Preparedness and Response Plan provided the template that countries could adapt and deliver with support from WHO. The COVID-19 Partners Platform enables governments, UN agencies, partners and donors to plan together and deliver in real time. More than one hundred and seventy countries now have COVID-19 Preparedness and Response Plans, in large part thanks to the leadership and engagement of regional directors, with one hundred and eleven countries planning, coordinating and requesting resources through the Partners Platform. Excuse me, I lost my— okay, sorry. I think it's stuck. We've put the funds we have received to good use. Of the one point five billion dollars that WHO has raised so far, the vast majority, approximately ninety percent, has been allocated to support our activities at regional and country level, thanks to you and others, to more than seventy donors who have provided financial contributions. In addition, WHO and the United Nations Foundation successfully launched the COVID-19 Solidarity Response Fund, which has so far raised more than two hundred and twenty four million dollars for the COVID response, from close to five hundred and sixty thousand individuals, companies and philanthropic institutions. Of course, COVID-19 is a crisis that touches every aspect of every society, and our response needs to be equally broad-based. Dr Tedros worked with the UN Secretary General to trigger the mobilisation of the UN Crisis Management Team, that brings together the collective strength of twenty three UN entities under one response umbrella with WHO coordinating. The UN CMT reports weekly to the Secretary General's Executive Committee. The Crisis Management Team has met twenty seven times and established nine work streams, with key agencies coordinating together on guidance, strategy, communications, supply chain management, UN staff health and medevac, animal human interface, education, travel and human rights. On the humanitarian front, the Inter-Agency Standing Committee initiated the system-wide scale-up of the UN's humanitarian response capacity, tailored specifically to the challenges of COVID-19. We thank Mark Locock for his leadership in taking that work forward across the UN system. We've worked with Robert Piper and his team at the UN Development Corporation Office, continually coordinates with United Nations country teams in one hundred and thirty six countries, to ensure that the UN system and every other partner is pulling in the same direction to support member states. To give an idea of the sheer scale of this process, weekly coordination meetings with country teams can have up to eight hundred UN resident coordinators, WHO representatives and other members of the UN country teams, to hear from regional and global leaders and to feed back on the lessons learnt and the experience from the ground. We have just completed a preliminary review of the experience with CMT and plan a more in-depth review in due course. The new way of doing business in WHO extends to WHO's core strength as a technical and normative agency. We've been able to draw extensively on our convening power, expert networks, advisory groups, WHO collaborating centres and our strong ties with national knowledge and expertise to rapidly gather and synthesise evidence into technical outputs and guidance across a broad range of thematic areas. Within the first days of the alert of this new disease, the WHO Incident Management Team began developing and adapting a comprehensive set of technical guidance for member states. The first set of guidance was made available to all countries on the tenth, eleventh and twelfth of January, respectively. WHO, with incredible inputs from experts around the world, has produced four hundred guidance documents and hundreds of other information products, covering the spectrum of COVID-19, preparedness response and essential health services. They are constantly updated and re-evaluated in the light of new evidence and are adapted by regional and country offices to shape the response where it matters most. It is, however, not only about quantity, it is also about speed and quality. The work led by the Science Division has been critical in this regard. In fact, the creation of the Science Division has created a sister programme for the Emergencies Programme, and I thank my sister Sumya and her staff for their partnership, and she's sitting here beside Dr Tedros and myself, and will be available to take questions on many aspects of our science-based response. Just a slide of the various things we've been doing in translating technical knowledge into real action at country level. And—I thought I was clicking. You see a couple of slides here on the Science Division collaboration with the IMST, and just exactly how the Science Division has been able to— and there are many other programmes. I'm using the Science Division as an example. There's so many of our other colleagues in health systems, in the access to essential health technologies, in vaccine programmes, in the business operations, in IT, who've all worked so closely to support the programme and to support the organisation and you in all of this. And in particular, not only adding more speed and assurance to our guidance, but ensuring the highest possible technical quality of our guidance, and it is a really useful second check on everything we do, to have that independent publication review committee constantly on our tails, ensuring that we've used the best evidence and that we're essentially listening to all views before issuing important guidance. In addition to guidance, another core function of WHO is really being at the centre of data and putting data at the heart of our actions. WHO took rapid action with partners to establish a global surveillance system that gathers standardised data at global, regional and country level. Each day, each night, WHO continues to validate, analyse and disseminate daily cases and deaths and many other pieces of data across the world. These data are routinely published on our websites and through a wealth of country and regional specific situation reports and dashboards, as well as globally via the COVID-19 dashboard. Again, this doesn't seem to want to advance. That's just a little movie of the dashboard itself, the various screens and how you can interact with that in real time, across all countries, all regions and a large number of different parameters of data. Through the Unity Studies, WHO has created another platform for standardised seroprevalence measurement and provided protocols and standardised diagnostic panels to countries to answer fundamental questions about the key drivers of COVID-19 transmission. Of the fifty countries implementing a Unity Study Protocol, fifty eight percent are low and middle income countries, underlining again the need to continue to shift towards driving public health impact in every country, in line with GPW thirteen. I think the DG has taken you through this story of the lab, and I'm not going to repeat it, I think his version is much more exciting than mine, but just to say, on this slide you have some numbers regarding how laboratory capacity is being scaled up around the world. And clearly, it's not just about the reagents, it's about the training, it's about ensuring that the labs have the broader capacities to be able to do the testing. We continue to send technical support and missions throughout the world. This has really been a massive effort by the regions, by the regional platforms led by the regional directors and our regional emergency directors, to deploy so many people into so many—in addition to the country presence in one hundred and fifty countries. Many countries needed extra—I think I've lost the presentation there. Many countries needed extra support, extra help or had specific requests for IPC expertise, for surveillance expertise, for lab expertise, and our regional directors and REDs were able to shape that response and launched over one hundred and six regional technical support missions. That's also been supplemented by GORN missions, EMT missions, which I'll speak about in a couple of minutes' time. And again, the regional platforms have been absolutely vital in this response, given the global nature of the disease, given the function of the headquarters unit versus the relevance of the regional offices, their proximity to countries, their understanding of the country context, and I think our regional offices have really worked tirelessly, with less resources than potentially they should have, to be able to deal with such a complex issue. You've all heard—we are all discussing more and more—the infodemic, that overload of often conflicting and wavered information, particularly prevalent on social media. There's a potential to cause great harm, but if we're smart in the public health community, we've also got the opportunity to work, to turn that tide and ensure that we make a difference in people's lives by getting them the best information possible. WHO has worked with more than fifty social media and technology companies to promote WHO's evidence-based information and limit the spread of misinformation and disinformation. We've also worked closely with the Under-Secretary General for Global Communications, Melissa Fleming, on their Verified Campaign, an initiative to flood the digital space with verified facts amid the COVID-19 crisis. Okay, good. At the same time, the EpiWin platform that WHO manages seeks to promote healthy behaviours in the time of COVID-19 and to mitigate harm from misinformation and disinformation by giving everyone access to timely, accurate and easy-to-understand advice and information from trusted sources. The platform works with faith-based organisations, employers and workers, the health sector, cities and governments, the travel and tourism sector, event organisers and many, many other groups. The platform and its partners have produced a wealth of information, mythbusters, fact-checkers, runs webinars and conferences specifically aimed at countering the flow of misinformation. We have to ensure that WHO is an authoritative voice on COVID-19, but a reliable one that resonates with individuals and communities everywhere. We're continuing to innovate to harness the power of new media and revolutionise the way we communicate public health messages to communities, at the same time minimising the potential of these platforms to sow confusion and misinformation. Technology is opening up new avenues to engage with communities and to ensure that their views are reflected in the response. A major focus of the Global Risk Communication and Community Engagement Collective Service, which was launched by WHO, UNICEF and IFRC with support from GORN and the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, is to tap into social data, including community perceptions of and insights into the response and health messaging, to amplify the views of communities and enable them to influence decision-making. I mentioned earlier that the previous investments in country preparedness and our global assets are paying dividends. The Director General referred to this. The Open WHO Training Platform was created in two thousand and seventeen, and much of its basic infrastructure, its base of trainers, its capacity to process knowledge and guidelines into online training materials, you can see very, very small uptake in terms of training, but a massive explosion in enrolments in the first months of this year, and the system was ready to absorb that, and as the DG said, multiple languages and multiple, multiple courses delivered and continues to expand. And as he said, this will form a launchpad for the WHO Academy as it moves forward. Again, you'll have heard of the Global Outbreak Alert and Response Network and the EMTs Initiative. Again, we thank you, our member states. It is your institutions, to a great extent, your expertise, that forms the basis and the core of these two very important platforms for global response, one focusing on networking for public health response, GORN, and the other EMTs focusing on clinical support around the world with emergency medical teams. You'll see the GORN partnership there in terms of the deployments around the world, and you'll also see in terms of EMTs. And again, the fact that we already had one hundred international EMTs tested and certified by last year, they've done fifty international missions this year, despite also the need to be at home, they have managed to deploy internationally. But more importantly, I think, that six hundred and seventy local new teams have been supported by EMTs and are being trained by local and national and international EMTs, thereby increasing the standardisation and, in a sense, the scale-up of our capacity to support each other with quality medical services across borders and within borders when time is needed. A lot of work has been done to fix the broken supply chain. A well-trained workforce is of no use if it lacks vital equipment and supplies to do the job. This was one of the defining features of the pandemic at the beginning, and it wasn't just delivery that was broken. Raw materials, procurement, manufacturing, distribution were all entirely disrupted. This is one of the most complex problems we've ever faced, and this was with complex biomedical equipment and other things that require validation, require adaptation, and just purchasing this alone is a very, very complex process. We saw that problem coming and we took precedent into action with key partners. The Integrated COVID-19 Supply Chain System is unique in the history of outbreak response. The system marries the joint procurement and purchasing power of partners like WFP, UNICEF, Unitaid, the Global Fund and many, many others, to standardise technical specifications and help countries define needs through forecasting tools and the logistic experience of WFP, UNICEF, UNOPS and others. The outcome has been a smoothing of major market distortions, the delivery of quality-assured supplies and a consequent reduction in mortality that that can entail. And you'll see there the number of actual items that have been shipped by us, but there are much, much more in the system from other programmes and other partners. And again, this has been done through collaboration with multiple institutions around the world, and that's just one example for you of scaling up case management capacity. It's not just about the materials, it's about adaptive technical guidelines, creating market access, doing health operations, and we would just pay a special thanks to the engineering and architectural companies around the world who have given us pro bono support in designing and working with countries. and working with countries to design and adapt health facilities for everything from patient triage to ventilation to patient flow and many other things. It's a new network called Techni, and it allows the engineering and architectural community to contribute to global health through design services for health intervention. And again, obviously, the big procurement question that everyone was concerned about. The Health Cluster has been a major and important... Many of you out there will know how important the Global Health Cluster is in protecting the vulnerable, particularly in countries affected by humanitarian crisis. We've worked with the agencies and IISC members to tailor the public health and social measures for preparedness and response in low-capacity humanitarian settings. The Health Cluster serves 63 million people in 30 countries and is implementing the Global Humanitarian Response Plan to respond and preserve existing humanitarian health action and commitments as well as COVID-19 response. In all of this, protecting essential health services across the world has been one of the biggest challenges for everyone, be it in no matter what the income range of the country. One clear and critical challenge was how to maintain those services through the worst of the pandemic. And in a recent survey carried out by our health systems colleagues at Pulse Survey, massive disruptions across the world were reported across a whole range of health services, both in terms of provision of services and demand for services and access to those services. Much has been done by the Health Systems Programme in partnership with many of you to develop the technical and operational guidance documents on how to maintain those services and how to take practical action to maintain access to high-quality services during COVID. And more work will come in this space in the coming weeks and months. Speed and unity of purpose. There are two defining characteristics of the way global research and development have risen to the challenge of COVID-19. As I say, I'm making this intervention partly on behalf of myself and Sumia, and also Bruce Ilworth, who manages the ACT Accelerator inside WHO. But I do believe if you put your mind back to February, when the Research and Development Blueprint, we convened a global meeting of experts to look at priorities for COVID-19 research. Importantly, the WHO R&amp;D Blueprint had its genesis in West Africa during the Ebola response. It's been road-tested and refined in several outbreaks since, and it has revolutionised the way research and development has been conducted since the onset of this pandemic. As I said, the first week of February, we had the first multi-stakeholder meeting to identify research priorities, to identify gaps, and launch a roadmap for research priorities. This roadmap and the priorities across a whole range of areas, from therapeutics to vaccines to diagnostics. And a lot of these products, the product profiles, were already ready to be adapted, because they were the foundational work within the R&amp;D Blueprint for Disease X. Many of you will have heard of Disease X. Much of the work that was used to prepare for Disease X was directly translated when the X could be replaced by SARS-CoV-2. And that advanced work, and that work with partners in advance, really allowed us to start, have a running start in the fight to build up the research needed. One of the great illustrations of the power of this broad approach has been illustrated by the Solidarity Trial. There are over 12,000 patients across 500 participating sites, and this has already changed clinical practice. It has ruled out several unsuccessful treatments, confirming that corticosteroids can be effective in patients with severe disease. There are also plans to take this platform for... And Dr., Sumia may respond later and explain how we can apply potentially this platform when it comes to candidate vaccines down the line. In terms of the animal-human interface, as part of WHO's One Health Work, we work with FAOIE and the United Nations Environment Programme. We vision guidance on how to reduce the risk of transmission of emerging zoonosis in traditional food markets, and we'll shortly publish further guidance on how to improve safety of traditional food markets. At the One Health Interface, we also work closely to shed light, working closely with FAOIE, to shed light on the source and intermediate host of this virus. And you will see there that we've worked very closely since the very beginning. This area of animal-human interface was raised at that meeting in February in Research Priorities. It was highlighted in the resolution, and WHO has worked very closely with Chinese authorities by sending an advance team to prepare for those studies. And a pre-mission, as I said, was launched in July, and the terms of reference was agreed there in terms of looking at the studies that have already been conducted, identifying gaps in knowledge, and developing the terms of reference for both short and long-term studies in two phases. And at the moment, WHO has prepared a list of candidates to join such an international mission from all around the world, both through direct contact with member states and a call for participation through the GORN network. And a list of candidates has been submitted to the Chinese authorities for their consideration and for next steps in order to deploy that team. I'm sure though you've all been deeply engaged over the last number of weeks on the ACT Accelerator. Bruce is here, and as are Mari Angela, I think, and Hanan, and others online, as well as Sumia, so all of the key players who've been driving this on our side and working so closely with this wonderful partnership, a bold structure, and it is driving unprecedented collaboration across the world. It has a critical path approach, and it really has accelerated these parallel work streams across this unique partnership, in the hope of rapidly achieving something that probably was a pipe dream only a few months ago. It's achieved landmarks in its startup phase in diagnostics, vaccines, therapeutics, and inequitable allocation. But its main challenge right now, and I'm sure the DG has spoken to this clearly in his speech, is really around financial challenges, especially to scale up right now, and then the longer-term costs of the rollout and access and distribution ultimately of vaccines. Finally, some things change and other things do not. The reality is that this is still an infectious disease. People are exposed. If they're exposed, they may be infected. If they're infected, they may die or have a severe illness, or they may transmit that disease on to somebody else. The basic circle of infection does not change. What changes is our knowledge on how and where that happens, the risk factors for that, and the measures we're willing to put in place to reduce exposure, to reduce infection, to reduce mortality, and to reduce transmission. Many other activities are needed to support that, including good governance, strong policy, coordination, financing, access to data, coordinated research, coherent strategies, and access to healthcare and access to the tools to fight the disease. In that sense, nothing has changed and everything has changed, because we are now heading into a difficult period. The disease continues to spread, it is on the rise in many parts of the world, but we have learnt lessons. In that sense, we need to consider the way forward. And in that sense, my final slide is to really, at this point, we need to look at how do we continue to prepare, empower, and respond to COVID-19 itself? How do we ensure equitable access to the tools to fight this disease? And how can we strengthen health systems at the same time, both in the short and medium term? All of this collectively with you, the Executive Board, and ourselves, is how can we adapt to ensure all of these activities are embedded within the core of the GPW 13? And how can we integrate those activities across the wider UN system to achieve the SDGs and other goals? That is both a scientific, it's a policy, and it is a political challenge going forward. I think that's it. I thank you all.
The floor is now open for discussion. I will give the floor first to EBI members I shall give the floor to Chile, to be followed by Germany. Chile, you can have the floor, please.
Muchas gracias, señor presidente.
Thank you, Chair. Distinguished friends, Chile is thankful that the special session was called, and the special work carried out by the Secretariat to carry it out. For the first time, we're working in a hybrid setup. In the faces of this global crisis, we have taken ownership of local measures so as to address the challenge of COVID. As stipulated in last year's resolution, as a country, we've developed a multi-sectorial approach, which has been implemented progressively throughout the country, bearing in mind the development of the virus, and also looking to recommendations that would cover senior citizens as well as the more delicate individuals of our society. All of this was carried out in accordance with WHO recommendations and guidelines. Chile wants to thank WHO for its efforts to coordinate the response. Thus it is, we support also the COVAX mechanism, which integrates values such as solidarity, but also a broader strategy to address the demand and distribution of vaccines. In accordance with what is stated in the COVID Resolution, Chile has maintained its processes and information open towards WHO, as is required by IHR. It has shared and spread the word regarding to its moves to respond to the challenge with countries in the region via the PROSOR network, and we've also worked hand-in-hand with PAGO. In this spirit of cooperation, Chile has called upon all countries to work together, and that is why it has developed a document that gathers ideas from many countries, and its major objective is to strengthen both preparation and response to the pandemic. We want to kick off a broad reflection on how we can strengthen our global health architecture. We believe that this initiative can contribute to the different measures that are being carried out by WHO and promote, together with efforts of other countries, a new version and understanding so that we can have better capacities to respond to crises of the scale of the one at hand, which has also had consequences at a socio-economic level throughout the world. This document currently has the support of Bolivia, Ecuador, Peru, Uruguay. Has been presented to the Director General of WHO, the IHR Review Committee, and to the Independent Panel for Pandemic Preparedness and Response. And we hope that its contents will serve as a foundation for further discussion in said mechanisms, and that these discussions will be reflected in future reports and recommendations stemming from their publications. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Chile. Now, Germany can have the floor, followed by Argentina. Germany, you can have the floor, please.
Thank you, Chair. DG colleagues, I speak on behalf of the EU and its member states. The candidate countries, the Republic of North Macedonia, Montenegro, and Albania, as well as the Republic of Moldova, align themselves with this statement. We thank the Chair and the DG for having convened this special session of the Executive Board. We would also like to thank the member states for their active participation in the negotiations on Resolution, World Health Assembly 73.1, and the cosponsors of the resolution. We are looking forward to continued updates on its implementation. We believe that the Board needs to fulfil its constitutional role in the midst of this crisis to review progress in the implementation of the resolution and to provide its guidance and oversight of the work of the Secretariat. We welcome the DG's interim report and commend WHO for coordinating the UN Health Response, helping countries in managing the pandemic, creating the supply chain system, and fostering global solidarity. We also welcome progress made on investigating the origin of the virus in collaboration with FAO and OIE, including by launching multi-sectoral and scientific studies. It is key that the planned expert mission be deployed soon. The EU and its member states, as Team Europe, have acted upon request for action from member states. By helping establish and acting as co-hosting the ACT Accelerator and by joining the COVAX facility to promote equitable and affordable access to COVID-19 diagnostics and therapeutics, as well as vaccines diagnostics and therapeutics, in line with the role of extensive immunisation against COVID-19 as a global public good, to ensure these tools can be properly deployed in countries the EU have advocated for the inclusion of a health system strengthening connector. We have been and will be demonstrating global solidarity by scaling up funding to help contain the virus in the most fragile and vulnerable contexts, including in humanitarian settings. Evaluation being an integral part of World Health Assembly 73.1, we are looking forward to hearing from the co-chairs of the IPPR, as well as the chairs of the IHR Review Committee and the IOAC. We touch great importance to the outcome of these evaluations, and hence expect final reports which are of the highest quality possible, fully independent, and based on scientific evidence. As a strong supporter of multilateralism, the EU's key strategic goal is to achieve the GPW and the 2030 Agenda objectives. While today we are focusing on the global response to COVID-19, we must not forget to deliver on the UHC and healthier population pillars. For when the next crisis strikes, we all need to be better prepared, and WHO must be enabled to fulfil its mandated role in global health security. Therefore, WHO should be further strengthened through political support, technical cooperation, and sustainable financing as the common responsibility of all member states for this organisation. Accountability and compliance with the IHR, as well as tackling structural challenges, are key elements in this. On the question of necessary reforms in global pandemic preparedness, the EU stands ready to participate constructively in the overall discussion. The WHO is a member state-driven organisation. Reforms will only be successful if they do not merely focus on how the Secretariat operates. Both the Secretariat and member states have parts to play. There are many proposals and contributions already on the table, including from member states from all regions and the WHO Secretariat. Neither should we forget the Preparedness Resolution adopted by the Board in February and tabled for adoption by the World Health Assembly in November. Therefore, following this special session of the Executive Board, the EU would be honoured to launch an inclusive process to discuss how best to bring these proposals together in close consultation with the evaluation and reform mechanisms. The aims would be, on the way forward, the 148th session of the Executive Board, to start building consensus among WHO member states on concrete steps to strengthen WHO's role in global health, emergency, preparedness, and response, especially those elements that can be achieved in the short term. I will come to an end now. We understand that we are all still in the midst of a crisis. Yet, if we learned one thing from the past, that is, it is that waiting for the crisis to pass often leads the world to shift from panic to neglect, resulting in reform proposals being left on paper and in drawers, never seeing the light of day. We cannot allow this to happen this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Germany. Now I give the floor to Argentina, to be followed by USA.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. DG colleagues. The impact of the COVID-19 pandemic has been strong in our countries. The impact of the COVID nineteen pandemic has been strong in our countries, especially in Latin America. And time will pass before we fully understand its negative effects in terms of social, health, and economic matters, which have already been seen. Since the beginning, Argentina has intensified cooperation and collaboration at all levels. Globally, it has participated in the solidarity trial to seek effective treatment for the virus. It has supported initiatives such as the A C T Accelerator and the Call to Action, and it has transmitted its interest in terms of participating in the solidarity trial for vaccines. Recently, it joined the COVAX mechanism as a concrete commitment to the fair and equitable distribution of vaccines for COVID nineteen between countries and, on general terms, to universal and fair access to health technologies and products, including through the use of free of charge licenses or those that are affordable. In terms of the development of vaccines, Argentina has been participating in clinical trials for three candidate vaccines in phase three, and an Argentinian laboratory will participate in the production for Latin American countries of one of the most advanced vaccines. At international level, early measures adopted in cooperation with the various jurisdictions allowed us to strengthen prevention capacities as well as detection and response to, for the health system. A comprehensive response was established, which included social protection measures and specific gender measures. Also increased production of critical supplies such as mechanical respirators, and part of the textile industry was converted to enable them to produce P P E. And some of this material has also been exported to the region. Furthermore, thanks to the cooperation between the Argentinian scientific system and the private sector, important developments have been promoted such as a test for simplified molecular detection. This pandemic has shown the importance of the role of the W H O in coordinating a response to the emergency and in providing technical assistance, guidelines, and information based on the latest scientific evidence available to member states, to health staff, and to the population in general. Finally, aware of the challenges that still arise before us with regard to this crisis, we to raise Argentina's commitment to global solidarity, and we would call for the collective responsibility of the international community to overcome this pandemic and to address our weaknesses. Thank you.
Thank you, Argentina. Now I give the floor to U S A, to be followed by Australia.
Thank you, Chair. For the U S intervention, I would ask that the floor be opened for my virtual member, Admiral Girard, please. Thank you.
... Service Commission for, thousands of whom are deployed across the United States, serving in this crisis. I also lead U S domestic public health and general prevention policies, including a new initiative for sickle cell disease, where we formed the United States Interagency Task Force with the goal of normalizing the lives and lifestands for Americans with sickle cell disease within ten years and supporting global efforts to save lives of those living with sickle cell around the world, particularly in Sub-Saharan Africa. We cannot live in nineteen, let us act on these and other public health efforts. There are too many lives at stake. After the nineteen eighteen influenza pandemic, our public health predecessors pledged that such a public health emergency would never happen again. And despite the many advances in technology, international cooperation, instantaneous communication since, and the positive steps in the response outlined this morning by Dr. Ryan, we cannot overcome the failure of any member state to provide accurate, complete, and timely information on outbreaks and potential health emergencies as required by the I H Rs. Consistent with our longstanding policy, the United States will continue promoting reforms that strengthen transparency and accountability at every international organization, including the W H O. The United States, working closely with G seven partners, developed a roadmap for W H O reform, which I shared with my fellow executive members in August. The roadmap outlines opportunities to strengthen the W H O by increasing its accountability, transparency, and overall effectiveness, as well as promoting our shared accountability to one another to address new and emerging threats. Germany and France jointly provided a paper also along these lines, and we understand Chile also has recommendations. We all share the same goal of reforming the W H O, fighting COVID nineteen, and defeating future outbreaks. The U S welcomes all good faith efforts to strengthen public health protections, and we hope we can use this special session to begin converting these many good ideas into actions. Mr. Chairman, let me conclude with Resolution W H A seventy-three point one, which encapsulates the views of all member states and directs the D G to provide a fair and full accounting of the COVID nineteen outbreak and responses. A key mandate from W H A seventy-three point one is the mission W H O, F A O, and O I E are leading to identify the zoonotic source of the virus and the route of infection to the human population. As this work was done by all members, it is critical that all states receive regular and timely including the terms for this panel for any commitments so that we can engage the process and be confident in the The United States is working here with terrible hindrance. Finally, I would board for the proposal in the intervention of Austria today for convening of board members objective and strengthening role of the board as opposed to a limited role. Only by having the executive board can we increase the transparency, accountability, and effectiveness of the entire organization. Thank you very much.
Thank you, U S A. Now I give the floor to Australia, to be followed by Austria.
Thank you, Chair. Our board members in Canberra will take the floor virtually.
Thank you, Chair. Australia acknowledges the efforts of the WHO in containing the spread of the virus. We particularly commend the Division of Pacific Technical Support in SUVA, which has been leading a coordinated response among partners to strengthen capabilities in the Indo-Pacific region. COVID nineteen is putting great pressure on health systems, societies, and economies. While coordinating response efforts, we must also ensure that the focus on COVID nineteen does not allow an increase in other health risks. We need strong health systems that support healthcare workers, address the health needs of the most vulnerable, including indigenous and older persons, and ensure access to high-quality services, including those focused on non-communicable diseases and palliative care. WHO's support for the continued safe functioning of health systems is of fundamental importance. We recognize the critical work of the WHO Health Emergencies Program, but know with concern that up to thirty percent of critical positions are not currently filled. It is crucial that WHO's health emergency functions are sustainably financed and have a skilled workforce. We acknowledge the efforts to date to raise funds to respond, raise funds to respond to COVID nineteen. However, we need a more sustainable and coordinated global approach to funding for the health emergency response. The ACT Accelerator is a major endeavor, and we welcome WHO's efforts to develop a global framework so that vaccines and therapeutics are allocated fairly. Australia is proud to join the COVAX facility. Our contribution to the advanced market commitment will support equitable access to safe, effective, and affordable vaccines for all countries. We strongly encourage the tripartite to collaborate closely to identify the zoonotic source of the virus and reduce the risk of emerging zoonosis. Transparency around this work is critical. We are keen to see further information on the membership of the international team and its program of work. We call for the tripartite to ensure that its guidance appropriately reduces the risk of pandemics from human and wildlife interactions. We must maintain momentum in our collective efforts to respond to COVID nineteen and strengthen preparedness and prevention. We consider it essential that WHO is as open as possible in this work. In recognition of our obligations to provide high-quality care and access to services as agreed under the COVID nineteen response resolution, we have also submitted a written statement to outline key features of our domestic response. Thank you.
Thank you, Australia. Now I give the floor to Austria, to be followed by Romania.
Thank you, Chair. Austria aligns itself with the statement of the European Union and its member states. We thank the Director General for the interim report on the implementation of the resolution of the World Health Assembly. The adoption of the COVID nineteen response resolution by the World Health Assembly early this year was a powerful and reassuring message to focus all our efforts on combating the common enemy and of our determination to overcome existing barriers. It was exactly the right moment for responding in a strong and timely manner to the acute crisis. Given the current pandemic, we know that an objective evaluation is key for future actions. Due to its constitutional function and member state's ownership, the Executive Board, as governing body, has a vital role in giving its guidance to the evolution process. Austria therefore welcomes your decision to finally hold this special session of the E B and to carry on this work from here on. We highly appreciate the presence of the I P P R co-chairs tomorrow and look forward to their briefing and their constructive dialogue with the Executive Board. Ensuring transparency and involvement in the development and implementation of the evaluation is essential, and all member states should have the opportunity to share their valuable contributions to the process now and in the future. Austria also welcomes that the weekly virtual member states information session on COVID nineteen scheduled every Thursday have increasingly been used for discussion and essential topics. Praise and thanks again to the W H O Regional Director, Dr. Kluge, and his team for the exclusive progress, process, transparent information, sharing, and excellent communication with member states during this health crisis. Austria values the actions of the W H O Euro Regional Office as a best practice in crisis management. In addition to the health crisis, we are also facing a weakening of the organization. This political weakening is further reinforced by the potential withdrawal of a strong W H O member state from the organization, which means a serious loss of organizational sources. We have noted that both, and European as well as the global task force, were looking into the financial consequences of the gap in funding caused by this withdrawal. Can you already share with us the findings and possible recommendations of this task force? I fully, I fully, full-heartedly will always defend the good and early reaction of W H O and you, Dr. Tedros, in February when it comes to this pandemic crisis. I would like to express my gratitude to this. Whoever says different is far off the facts and believes in fake conspiracy. But let me also express concerns on some other issues. How are we progressing on the matter of the global public good of vaccines and the action taken by the responsible U N agencies when it comes to intellectual property? This will be a key to enhance production capacities globally. I am also concerned when it comes to some managerial capacities of G A V when it comes to the global access to vaccines. Or, why is it that there no global, there is no global leadership when it comes to the many aspects of travel regimes and restriction? This is hurting the commerce and the travel industry in many, many aspects. Or, we have no, we have no proper guidance, governance of this valuable organization. Dr. Tedros, you did an extraordinary job when it comes to information, but information is not a substitute to consultation with the governing bodies. Maybe we could have been more precise when meeting the demands and needs of the people around the world. But we have started to changing the paradigm of our, of our work when it comes to COVID nineteen. From COVID crisis management to managing the crisis, we have to learn how to live with it. A second global economic shutdown is impossible, but we are making progress on this, and I am very grateful. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Austria. Now I give the floor to Romania, to be followed by Russian Federation. Romania, you can have the floor, please.
Thank you, Director General, Excellencies, dear colleagues. Romania fully aligns itself with the U N member states' statement delivered by Germany. I would like to thank the Director General for calling this reunion. I think that this special session of the E B is essential to ensure the consolidated action of our organization through a strong input from the member states to show our common commitment to counter COVID nineteen together through cooperation and solidarity. I would, I would also like to convene our appreciation for the comprehensive reports the Director General and the Executive Director has presented, have presented in line with the COVID nineteen response resolution adopted by the World Health Organization in May this year. Ladies and gentlemen, I would like to briefly share with you that Romania's national containment strategy has used a comprehensive approach in order to limit the spread of virus. Improved communication and resilience of our health system have been the key to address the COVID nineteen and to maintain the safe provision of the essential public health functions and services. We have constantly increased our testing capacity and our E intensive care unit capabilities. The control shift over the transmission has allowed us to gradually lift the restrictive measures in summer, and we have learned to live with the coronavirus and the strict condition and constant monitoring, but also to deal with some resurgences of the outbreak. We are aware that we need to prepare for challenges to come. We have to evaluate the measures put in place in order to capitalize on what has worked and to improve or change the parts of that failed. And most important of all, we have to learn from the experience we have gained. From this perspective, we consider the newly appointed Independent Panel on Pandemic Preparedness and Response of the utmost importance, more so from the perspective of the purpose of its activity, through truth-seeking, distilling lessons learned, and making recommendation for how collectively the world can be better prepared to respond to this pandemic and to any future one. The independent panels work in cooperation with the I H R Review Committee, the Global Preparedness Monitoring Board, and the Independent Oversight and Advisory Committee will contribute to increase of our preparedness and capacity of response to these diseases. E B, as governing body, should effectively participate in decisions aimed to evaluate the response of W H O during this pandemic. Real consultation with member state and transparency of dialogue are essential in enforcement of credibility of W H O's leading U N agency in finding COVID nineteen. Bringing all at the same table cooperation and exchange of information are the key issues in controlling SARS-CoV-2 pandemic. Finally, my country will continue to contribute to the international solidarity efforts in ensuring universal access to safe and effective vaccine against COVID nineteen as we have pledged through ACT Accelerator Initiative and through Team Europe to COVAX Facility. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Romania. Now I give the floor to Russian Federation, to be followed by Burkina Faso. Russian Federation, you can have the floor, please.
Thank you, Chair. I would ask to give the floor to the Vice Minister of Health, who is participating via video conference. So, would you please ensure that this can happen? Thank you very much. Chair, Director General, esteemed colleagues, we express our gratitude to the Director General, and we highly value Resolution W H A seventy-three one regarding the priorities of work on the COVID nineteen response, which is a real test for all healthcare systems globally. So in order to prevent and contain the infections, we need, this is a huge global responsibility for us, and we stress the importance of timely and equitable access to safe, quality, and efficacious medicine which is necessary to combat COVID-19. We call on getting rid of all obstacles to access to these medicines, and we recognize the key role of the WHO as a coordinator, and we call on further strengthening of the organization because it is a leader of global cooperation in the area of healthcare. We highly value the comprehensive measures undertaken by WHO to combat the pandemic, and we believe that the organization has acted professionally and in a timely manner. We note with satisfaction the progress in implementing strategic WHO plans to ensure preparedness and response, and also mechanisms to coordinate efforts to combat this pandemic, as a result of which we have a foundation for international projects, and we welcome the initiatives of WHO to consolidate international efforts to combat this infection, and we note the solidarity project and the initiatives to ensure quick access to instruments to combat this pandemic. We believe, we do not believe that we should be questioning the efforts of the WHO, and we are against the politicization of international cooperation in the area of healthcare. Destructive steps that have been taken to undermine the WHO is something that will damage and harm international efforts to combat this pandemic. We need to really analyze the legal procedures and administrative and financial procedures regarding the steps that have been taken by the United States of America against the WHO. The Russian Federation, from the very beginning of the pandemic, has provided financial support to the WHO. Our country has a unique experience in the effective containment of COVID-19, and we have a system of measures that we are observing within our countries, and we are working on a process that is based on research from Russian specialists. And in addition to comprehensive measures aimed to control the epidemiological situation, we also have a series of innovative medicines, and also the first vaccine in the world to be created against COVID-19 was made by Russia. The Russian Federation has provided information regarding Sputnik V. Esteemed Chair, we ask you to look at the impartial assessments of measures to respond to COVID-19. We ask the Director General of WHO to provide member states with a plan for carrying out such an assessment, including proposals on procedural aspects and issues of legalities. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you, Russian Federation. Now I give the floor to Burkina Faso to be followed by Oman.
Thank you very much, Chair. Burkina Faso is honored to make a statement on behalf of the forty-seven member states of the African region of the WHO. The member states of the African region of the WHO would like to warmly thank the Director General for the quality of his report. In fact, this report gives an update on the achievements of the WHO as part of the implementation of Resolution WHOA 73.1, and also highlights the main challenges and lessons learned in terms of the COVID-19 response. The African region commends the Director General and the entire WHO institution for its leadership in coordinating the global response to the pandemic of COVID-19, and particularly for having united and involved all relevant stakeholders through a number of platforms and mechanisms to manage this unprecedented global health crisis. Thus, the implementation of platforms such as the Platform of Partners to Combat COVID-19 has allowed African countries to benefit from technical and financial assistance in order to support different preparedness and response national plans as regards COVID-19. The support of the WHO has allowed all countries in the African region to have at their disposal or and/or strengthen laboratories that are capable of detecting COVID-19, and this goes for practically all of the countries in the region. And we encourage WHO to continue and strengthen its support to member states in order to significantly increase their capacities as part of the implementation of recommendations of the IHR, particularly at a national level. This pandemic once again has demonstrated, if further proof was needed, the importance of the one health concept, and we encourage the WHO in its collaborative work with all relevant stakeholders. Given the devastating effects at an economic and developmental level, and in particular for countries with limited resources and with poorly resilient health systems facing this global health emergency, we would also like to stress the importance of operational directives of WHO on maintaining essential health services. These are directives which have allowed us at an African level to continue important health programs, particularly as part of efforts to ensure UHC, and this is in line with objectives to implement the African Health Strategy 2016 to 2030. The pandemic has revealed the necessity to strengthen all health system pillars, and this has also revealed the importance of building a health system with sufficient resources and adequate funding. This approach is the only long-term and sustainable one, and this is why we urge an increase in investment in health systems of member states, an increase in developmental assistance, and strengthened international cooperation for mobilizing resources. We encourage and support compliance with international treaties, allowing for strengthened international cooperation and collaboration, both North-South and South-South, for the transfer of intellectual property and technology for the manufacturing of all products and equipment to combat COVID-19. Once available, we insist that these products must be distributed equitably and transparently without leaving anyone behind. To conclude, Chair, the COVID-19 pandemic has highlighted flagrant inequalities between developed countries and developing countries, but also inequalities within countries themselves. These inequalities have negative consequences on our health, societies, and economies. This is why countries must be assisted. The WHO and relevant institutions must advocate for the support of economies in difficulty, particularly through debt-waving mechanisms. And to conclude, member states of the African group call for continued global solidarity and for supporting the WHO as the main United Nations agency in the coordination of this global crisis, and we reaffirm the importance of ensuring the full implementation of all provisions in Resolution WHOA 73.1. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Burkina Faso. Now I give the floor to Oman to be followed by China.
Thank you very much, Your Excellency. Excellencies, colleagues, ladies and gentlemen, it gives me great pleasure to speak to you on behalf of my colleagues in the Eastern Mediterranean region. As COVID-19 continues to rage across the Eastern Mediterranean region, governments are working at full speed to contain the pandemic in their countries. In addition to the public health risk that the virus presents, we are also understandably concerned about the economic, social, and political cost of this pandemic. Many countries in the region had earlier implemented measures that resulted in successful containment of the virus and a steady decline in the cases. But of course, it is to be expected that as social measures such as lockdowns are lifted, cases will increase. But we have to relax these measures in a way that is informed by evidence and that mitigates the public health impact. Other factors contributing to the rise in number of cases and that we need to directly and aggressively address, these include COVID fatigue among communities and misinformation that are limiting the uptake of personal protective measures such as mask-wearing and physical distancing. They also include our slow progress at scaling up essential public health measures such as testing and contact tracing. More technical support is required from WHO to scale up testing capacity, especially in countries affected by complex emergencies, and there are many of them in our region. These countries also require more resources from WHO to implement response activities, including support for rapid response team and provision of supplies. Health workers everywhere are our most valuable assets, and we emphasize the need to protect them as they manage both COVID-19 and other conditions. Ladies and gentlemen, the search for safe and effective vaccine continues, and there are seven countries in our region engaged in Phase Three trials. We need to ensure fair and equitable distribution of the vaccine to all health workers and to all countries in the region, especially those with greater number of vulnerable populations exposed to famine, natural disasters, political conflicts, and other disease outbreaks. They have already suffered enough. Many people in our countries are also bearing the brunt of disrupted essential health services as resources are diverted to battling COVID-19. We urge WHO to ensure support to sustain the continuity of essential health services and reduce the impact of the pandemic on our population. Countries in the Eastern Mediterranean region have shown great dedication and collaboration in addressing this pandemic. Though the last few months have been challenging, we cannot relax our efforts now. We need to persist in our fight against this pandemic, and we need to ensure our people get all the essential health services they need. We know that. We know that no one country can combat this pandemic alone, nor can one country end it alone. We reiterate our commitment to working together as one force, putting political and other differences aside, and using our common goal of the health of our populations as a bridge to sustainable peace during this critical time, and as Dr Tedros, the Director General of WHO, whom I admire his leadership, keeps repeating, "None of us is safe unless and until all of us safe." Thank you very much.
Thank you, Oman. Now I give the floor to China to be followed by Sudan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Chinese delegation would like to thank the Secretariat for the report on the update on implementation of Resolution WHOA 73.1 on the COVID-19 response and the report on the global situation. We appreciate the Secretariat's response in accordance with the requirements of the Resolution and rapid formulation of the work and strategic preparedness and response plan in terms of information collection guidelines, development, financing, and advocacy, assisting member states to take effective measures to respond to the pandemic. We welcome WHO and the UN and various multilateral organizations to work together to strengthen overall cooperation and coordination and promote synergy. We applaud WHO for supporting countries in improving IHR core capabilities and taking measures to support countries to respond to COVID-19 by continuing to provide basic health services and promote UHC. We appreciate WHO's support to countries in need with platforms such as GONE and EMT Networks. We call upon all parties to jointly support WHO's efforts to develop standardized products and technical guidelines to respond to COVID-19 and its work in combating misinformation, false information, and malicious activities on the internet. China has always been transparent and responsible to fulfill our international responsibilities. We support WHO in fulfilling its responsibilities, implementing Resolution WHOA 73.1, providing financial support to WHO, maintaining close communication with all levels of the organization, and establishing a technical communication mechanism, receiving visits by WHO experts. Prevention and control and scientific cooperation in virus traceability and other in-depth exchanges have been carried out. Currently, the global situation of the pandemic is worrying. The northern hemisphere is about to enter a season of high incidence of respiratory diseases, which will bring greater challenges to the prevention and control. We call upon all parties to continue to support WHO in playing a leading role in the fight against the pandemic, unite and strengthen our cooperation, work together to meet the challenges, and jointly build a human health community. Thank you.
Thank you, China. Now I give the floor to Sudan to be followed by Israel.
Honorable Chair, distinguished delegates, Excellencies, Sudan welcomes the updates on Resolution World Health Assembly 73.1 by the Secretariat and commands WHO for the great effort in catalyzing the global response to the COVID-19 pandemic. With an increasing number of cases worldwide, the pandemic has created double-bending on Sudan capacity to sustain its standard function as well as the COVID-19 response. The destruction of routine services clearly The disruption of routine services clearly exhibited, particularly during the initial phase of the pandemic, directly resulted in the stagnation of timely detection of reported bolus cases, which inevitably led to declaration of the current bolus outbreak in Sudan. The disruption in the routine services during the COVID pandemic, especially in a fragile health system, has impacted the closure of most of the immunization sites during the first two months, which eventually resulted in the drop of recovery of the routine immunization by 11% compared with the second quarter in 2019. To that, we urge WHO to take prominent steps in supporting Sudan in controlling the current bolus outbreak as well as provision strategic support on strengthening the RMNCA services. The additional implication of the COVID-19 pandemic is the fatigue, emergency preparedness and response system, which has rendered Sudan's health system increasingly vulnerable to multiple outbreaks. This has been clearly demonstrated during the recent unprecedented floods, which initiated the declaration of national state of emergency, resulting in over 100 deaths and displacement of thousands, in addition to providing suitable environment for vector-borne diseases and outbreak of febrile illness. We call on increased global solidarity and support to combat the severe effects of floods in Sudan and further support in strategizing roadmap to mitigate and recover both COVID pandemic. Sudan acknowledges all effort made by WHO in ensuring accelerated vaccine development through the COVAX pillar and especially through the amplification of efforts by GAVI WHO to us. It is centrality of solidarity to the COVAX pillar that makes the added value, which requires addressing the inquiries and contextual sensitivities of each member state. Sudan comments WHO role in assuring effective regulation and optimum allocation through the COVAX facility, and Sudan calls WHO for further support and augmentation. Dear Chair, Sudan's health workforce domain has been facing tremendous challenges for years, which were clearly highlighted during this year consecutive, yes consecutive health crisis and as main factors affecting the appropriate country response. Sudan calls on WHO at the three levels of the organization to support effort in the following areas. Leading policy dialogue for the health workforce to build, develop concept strategies and mechanism to strengthen, to coordinate the coordination. Build the health workforce management system, building the right health workforce capacities in regard to the country-specific context to strengthen the response to the emergency rosters of target capacity. Developing policies to that support the health workforce, ensuring decent wealth, psychosocial support and women empowerment. Sudan acknowledges the needs to shift focus to public health interventions from response and rather strengthening preparedness by reinforcing the capacities and mobilizing to the proper resources to provide support to developing countries in accordance with the commitment made through the Sustainable Development Goals. The consequences of the health crisis saddling the country and deeply affecting its people have taken a particular toll in progressing the efforts made to sustain development and deliver integrated primary healthcare with a special focus on universal health recovery. Sudan reiterates its commitment in fighting the pandemic and reversing the consequences exhibited not in WHO consistent support throughout. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Sudan. Now I give the floor to Israel to be followed by Bangladesh. Israel, you can have the floor, please.
Thank you very much. Our national statement will be given by our Dr. Itamar Grotto from Jerusalem. If you can please open the mic for him.
Yes, it's opened already. Thank you. Thank you, Chairperson, Director General Dr. Tedros, distinguished colleagues. We wish to thank the Director General and the Secretariat for organizing this special session. We also appreciate the weekly member state briefings, which we found informative. We are also thankful for the presence of our colleagues in Geneva and around the world, meeting while many of us are still in the midst of a long battle against COVID-19. Serves as a testament for our shared commitment to ensuring global hands through multilateralism and solidarity. In the same spirit, we are proud to participate in the COVAX facility during convened by GAVI, CEPI and WHO. We strongly support the goal of ensuring fair and equitable access to COVID-19 vaccines, which is based on strong practical and moral basis. This initiative is a first of its kind and will set a precedent for future pandemics made and overcome. We should thus build this framework together and ensure that all participants agree, both in the process and retrospect, that the facility operates in a fair, comprehensive, efficient and timely manner. We take this opportunity to extend our deepest appreciation to frontline workers around the world, including medical teams who work tirelessly and out of a deep sense of devotion and commitment to assuring that all of us are safe. Chairperson, we, Member States and the whole world, turn their eyes to the WHO for guidance and leadership. The WHO's performance relies heavily on the ability to adapt to fast-changing reality. In this regard, we wish to stress two points. Firstly, an independent evaluation process is a source for strength and a precondition for assuring accountability. The ongoing work of the IOAC and IPPR and the IHR Committee serve as an important basis for improvement. In this context, it is crucial to avoid duplication between the work of these bodies and assure efficiency. Secondly, guidance and input from member states is another source of strength. While the WHOA 73.1 Resolution on COVID-19 Response reflects member states' priorities and referred future steps, fast development demands more frequent opportunities for inclusive consultations and input from the member states. We ask the Office that the Office will facilitate, dedicate discussion and the WHO allocation framework and future direction for strengthening the WHO reform. We look forward to receive updates from the Co-Chairs of the Independent Panel for Pandemic Preparedness and Response, the Chair of the IHR Review Committee and the Chair of the Independent Oversight and Advisory Committee for WHO Health Emergency Program. I thank you for your attention and wish all of you, my esteemed colleagues, health during these times. Thank you.
Thank you, Israel. Now I give the floor to Bangladesh to be followed by Botswana. Bangladesh, you can have the floor, please.
Mr. Chair, His Excellency Permanent Representative Bangladesh will deliver the statement. He has connected with us through virtual platform. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, at the outset, I would like to congratulate you on your election as the Chair of the I would, Dr. Tedros, Director General, for calling for this special session. The tiny initiative by WHO to take stock of the progress is made so far in a response and a possible way forward. Mr. Chair, since the inception pandemic, the government of Bangladesh under the leadership of Honorable Prime Minister Shekhasina has been weak on. The government has issued 31-point directives to mitigate the impact of the pandemic. It has mobilized t-shirts, gloves, masks, PPEs to protect health workers. Our National Pre-Test and Response Plan for COVID-19 reflected a whole of the government's road to tackle this pandemic. Government has also allocated around 13.25 billion euros to equivalent to 4% of GDP for recovery from this crisis. We have also included 1.1 million euros that we are posting in all our interventions. Mr. Chair, the whole world is waiting for COVID-19 vaccines. Like to thank GAVI, CEPI and GAVI for launching the COVAX Facility Initiative. My special thanks go to GAVI for the initiative on the COVAX ANC in order to help the lower and middle-income economies towards ensuring fair and equitable access to COVID-19 vaccines. Particularly, Bangladesh has earned international recognition in producing if we are provided with the technological know-how and as our pharmaceutical industry can use COVID-19 vaccine in mass scale. We look forward to having such opportunities. Mr. Chair, I wish to make following four points. First, WHO should continue to advocate for ensuring equitable and affordable access to medicines and vaccines for COVID-19. Second, pandemic has exposed the gaps in our efforts to build a robust global health system. There must be stronger international partnership to meet the needs of lower-income countries through timely and adequate development as well as humanitarian assistance. Third, we request WHO to assess the impact of COVID-19 on mental health, assist the member states to mitigate the negative consequences in this respect. Finally, and the pandemic should not divert attention and resources away from our long-term development needs in achieving the 2030 agenda. We must prioritize universal health coverage and improved nutrition for all. I thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Bangladesh. Now I give the floor to Botswana to be followed by Ghana. Botswana, you can have the floor, please.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. May I request that the Minister of Botswana, the Honorable Lemahankuape, make his read the national statement online. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chair. Allow me to first and foremost commend you for convening this special session of the COVID-19 response, particularly as we see a second wave of infection spreading across some countries. It could not have been more opportune. In this regard, Botswana aligns itself with the statement made by Burkina Faso on behalf of the 47 African countries of the WHO Africa Region. Chair, I wish to further commend the Director General and his team for their dedication and the tireless effort to support countries to manage this public health crisis of such great proportion, not seen since the Spanish Flu. I also thank you, Director General, for a comprehensive and informative entering report on the implementation of the Resolution WHOA 73.1 on the COVID-19 response. This important resolution has set the framework through which member states, the WHO and other stakeholders can intensify individual and collective efforts to control the COVID-19 pandemic. In this respect, Botswana has used the WHO Strategic Response and Preparedness Plan and its operational guidance to update her COVID-19 national plan. Another notable milestone is the decentralization of laboratory capacity for detection of SARS-CoV-2 to cover all high-traffic ports of entry of Botswana. In addition, we have intensified the national surveillance, intensified the national severe active respiratory infection surveillance, as well as integrated the epidemiological surveillance of influenza with the laboratory surveillance into one system through the National Health Data Collaborative Initiative. Chairperson, it is of paramount importance that we continue to strengthen our health system to enable us to provide access to high-quality essential health services, particularly for the most vulnerable who have indeed been disproportionately impacted by COVID-19. We therefore welcome the guidance and support rendered by the WHO for the continuation of essential services in the context of COVID-19 and the WHO's close monitoring of impact of the pandemic and delivery of essential health services. As I intimated, resources and policy prioritization need to be directed towards strengthening health systems, particularly in limited resource setting, in order to provide people-centered and holistic approach to health throughout life course. Chairperson, as per the resolution, there's a need to ensure equitable access to affordable diagnostics, therapeutics, medicines and eventual vaccines for the COVID-19. We thus appreciate the WHO ongoing work in this regard and are confident that the WHO will continue to work closely with member states with respect to all the ongoing processes. In conclusion, Chair, I wish to express the commitment and readiness of the government of Botswana to continue its collaboration with WHO, other member states and global health partners in the quest to find a solution to the COVID-19 pandemic and to shape the new normal as we build back better. I thank you for your kind attention.
Thank you, Botswana. Colleagues, it is now 1,500 hours and the time for the scheduled break. We shall meet again after one hour at 1,600 hours CET to resume our discussions. And the first one to take the floor shall be Ghana, to be followed by United Kingdom, just after the break.